Do we have no presentations?
No, I'll just give a brief update. So, hold on, did you see my, uh, tees? Polish tees?
Hey, your Polish thing is not up there.
Oh, can't you see it? You got it backwards.
I thought it was Polish tees when I came in. Yeah, there you go. Did you get them in the Polish store?
How did you get them?
I love it. Excellent. I should get me one of those. Is it very tight on your mouth?
No.
No? That's a push against it? It looks comfy.
It is.
We are wired.
Wasn't that like seven dollars?
Yeah.
But it's your wrong color.
Ah, no, it's not. It looks all right.
They actually have red and white ones also.
Yeah.
But she said she has to teach, teach what side is white because most people don't know whites on top.
It's seven if you ask her. No, unless you can see her.
We ready?
Yes.
Like a Polish meeting order? Please rise for the pledge allegiance and hope of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. To the roll call, please.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonnet.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So that brings us to communications, pro confirmations or presentation.
I'll just give a brief update on COVID-19. Last week I announced we had five employees that tested positive. I'm pleased to inform you all but one has been back to work. And so a couple of them came back with medical clearance this week and are working. And we've had four people that are home either waiting for test results or quarantined because of exposure. And I talked to three of the four today. The challenge is it's only within testing now. It takes up to six days to get results back. One person got tested Wednesday and as of four o'clock they still didn't get results back yet. So that's kind of timeline here and we've taken precautionary measures. For example, when you had your special meeting last week, we looked through when they cleaned all the glass, the chairs, everything before the next day's meeting. So we're trying to do as proactive as possible. And I want to thank Chairman Bonnet for meeting with the clerk, myself, Lisa Peacock, and Matt and Sorgi yesterday. As you remember from my update Friday, said we were considering to do some changes here. And we're kind of following the path of other northern Michigan counties. I know for sure Grand Terrace County and several other ones have gone to an appointments-only system. So we are doing that effective tomorrow. That does not mean people cannot come in the building. We encourage them to call ahead. And actually, a lot of people have been doing that anyway for the last several weeks. But if someone does come and is not an appointment, we still provide service. We have a lobby phone and we're simply giving people option, meeting, meeting their clients or their people here either in this room. Conference room number two has plexiglass set up. If there's more than one or two people there, they can meet or they can take them back to the office. So we're not closing down as we did last time. And even when we closed from March to June, I don't think there's a single person that was not given service. And that's our goal also this time. So we're gonna try it out. It starts tomorrow morning. The staff is grateful for the extra safety measures. And we're doing it on behalf of the staff, but also on behalf of the people coming into buildings. As you said, we've had positive cases here in the buildings too. So it's a safety precaution. I think you will appreciate it. Mr. Bonnet left a dear line yesterday morning to come and meet with us. So thank you, Will, for your efforts there. And I think you were paid off with successful hunt this morning.
Yes.
So I'll keep you up on the situation. But all offices are open, are open now. Where Sir Leeds Office was closed, that is open and fully staffed. They're trying to call out. And every other office is staffed. And we'll hopefully stay on. Yeah, in terms of meetings, there's some curtailation on that. So as of tomorrow, based on the health department guidelines, commission meetings, you still can be present here in the room. We are limited to 10 people in the room. So, and commissioners, you obviously have the option to zoom in. But for the public, we cannot have more than 10 people in this room. So we still will be offering, as we have the YouTube Live, and we will be encouraging people to go on YouTube who have the phone line. We'll try to give the presentations as we did previously by Zoom. And the department has, depending on how many people are here, will set up a room as we did last time. And they'll come in here just depending on how people are in the room. So we're trying to meet that 10 people.
You want to say something about emails?
Go ahead. Emails, I'm sorry.
Well, just that, oh, that the emails, you know, now are gonna be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And I think all of your ideas are working now. And for the public, we switched our email system to leonol.gov. So simply type in your first, initial, your last name, and then add leonol.gov. And I think every commissioner now has it properly functioning. If, if people sent the email to the old address, it still work. You still will get it. But if you send emails, remind everyone to use the leonol.gov so it gets in their address books. And if you have returned, if you have a notice that says what your name and title is, change that to the new email address. But the old one will still be working for many months yet. We're trying to convert everyone to leonol.gov.
Any other questions?
Thank you for reminding me of that.
I just wanted to remind everybody.
Yes. Yeah. I think all some commissioners are now set up. I did Commissioner Sudis Little this afternoon. So I think everyone is getting their emails on the leonol.gov account now.
Do we have any minutes to approve?
Uh, that one set I sent you on, I think that was from last month. We defer until today.
So before last for the full, what is it? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would move to approve the minutes from executive session Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
So, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passed 7-0. Thank you. So then that would bring us to the approval of the agenda. And I only have one, one thing. I have a deletion of number 10 dash 7. And I'd like to read this email. I had written it to Chet and I thought he was gonna send it out with miscommunication and the problems. But it says, "I read through the 2% grant plan. Commission is still in the information gathering stage. Has this plan been submitted to and approved by its committee?" It said, "This looks like another late addition that has not been completely vetted. This request is obviously premature and changing rapidly. We need time to digest and discuss what is being requested. Believe it is best that we wait until our organizational meeting when Gwen and Rick are present to help formulate the plan and what our commitment would be. A plan could be included as part of our 2021 goals." And I had on there, "Please forward this to the rest of the board." So that was my email, but it didn't get forwarded out. And so, you know, I think at this time, and actually, um, yesterday, some changes came through on it again. And I don't know if anybody's looked at those. And now today, there was again another update. So, you know, that, I would ask that, that be on, if we're gonna approve the agenda, as with that one deletion. Commissioner Wessel.
Me, uh, before we vote on that, I, uh, I did get Chairman Bonnet's email. And my initial reaction was that we should pull it. And then I changed my mind because it was in August when we passed our resolution. We identified in our resolution the activities, the goals, the objectives of what we're in work on. Instead of coming last week with a finished application, we purposely agreed to come here and talk about it in this session after we had item five on the agenda last week, which was next steps. Now, the problem with that is that when we got to agenda five on the agenda last week, we didn't talk about next steps except one. And that was that we would submit a 2% grant application. And we said we would do it this week. And then we said that, and it was passed 7 to 0, or 6 to 1, I guess. And people were supposed to get suggestions to Chet. I wrote the grant looking at the resolution that we had passed unanimously. I left everything open, saying that the proposed request did not commit us to any specific action. We were just asking for some funds to have training in, in, in the, in the future year. The proposed grant was not vetted poorly. Uh, it was vetted as much as people wanted to because it was on the agenda. And if commissioners chose not to do that, that's, uh, that's, that's their issue. Uh, all commissioners were invited to have input. I did get from, from Commissioner Ann Sorgi some suggestions on, on the grant after I had submitted the initial one. So I think I took all of his suggestions and incorporated them in the revision that you got today. My problem with putting it on when we talk about goals, and it's hard for me to talk like this when other commissioners are, are raising their head and hand to talk. Wait till I get done speaking, Commissioner Lautner. It's hard for me to, it's hard for me to support putting it on the goal discussion in January because typically, we start talking about our goals in, in January and we finish up in June. And I think that's too long to wait. So I'm asking for us to consider the grant application today that further goes from the resolution, further commits us to training, but doesn't say what training's going to be. We could talk about that in January. We could talk about it in February. But at least we submit the grant and get some funds available to do that. So I do not support taking it off the agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Lautner.
Well, I was going to make a motion to approve the agenda minus 10, number seven.
Commissioner Sudis Little.
Yes, I, I would agree that we should leave it on the agenda. I did, I didn't send my comment to Chet, my apologies. I sent him instead to, to Ty. And since he was drafting the grant and he incorporated my comments in here too, in terms of things that I thought would be useful to have. So I agree. I think people had an opportunity to, to submit their thoughts. They were asked to do so. Some of us did, some didn't. And I think we ought to go ahead and, and talk about this and look at submitting the grant tonight.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Um, I'd like to hear maybe from the person who made the motion. I don't know, whoever is appropriate. Why are we, why are we wanting to take it off the agenda? I'm not, I'm not really clear on that. So if somebody would speak to that for me, please do so.
Um, if, if I may, um, I, I just was, um, I don't even see it. I agree, we had something that landed on our desk tonight again. So another change. I don't even know where, where I put it right now, actually, over here. And I haven't, it took me a while to figure out what it was. And then I finally see what it was, but I haven't read the whole thing through yet. So I, I think that Chairman Bonnet has a good point, that that organizational meeting would be a, a very good time to set up, uh, schedule, a timeframe, um, get all thoughts of, of, with all new commissioners, et cetera. That's my thinking, so.
Commissioner Lautner.
I, I thought about this after I supported this last week. And it occurred to me that the Board of Commissioners, um, has a budget for training. So financial need is not a necessity for this. My other concern in reading the application was the requirement of a report. And it's my perception, when a report is required, I assume, right or wrong, that when we request a grant and we state specific details on how we're gonna use that grant, the grantor expects us to live up to the language in the application. And that raised some concern for me because we, as a board, um, as it has been mentioned, this has not been thoroughly discussed, uh, determined that the next steps that have been put on this request is not a combination of all commissioner input. Now, I understand there was a brief comment because I went back and listened to the meeting. There was a brief comment that was made here. If anybody's got any input, get it to Chet. And quite frankly, I don't think that's an adequate request for us to vet this issue. When we have to begin to report to another agency or another sovereign nation, I believe it interferes with our autonomy as a board. So that raised a level of concern for me. These next step items indicated in the application, it preempts the ability of the newly elected commissioners to participate in this decision process for 2021. We had one training session, one. So now we're all experts. We heard the position or the opinion of a certain position. As I have done a little research, there are several positions out here in this nation. We've heard one and we've zoomed in on that. And now we want to take this thing to the next level. We haven't, in my opinion, got enough information from all the resources that are available to us. So I think that we, as a board, are rushing headlong into the fire before we, one, have had an opportunity to learn a little bit more about this subject. It is a very important subject. And I think we do ourselves a disservice because quite frankly, I don't see the fire. I don't see the houses on fire. There's 2%, grant opportunities two times a year. Once we vet this, talk about this, decide this as a board, as a whole, we move forward in unison to bring that tranquility to our community. So for those reasons, I will not support the 2% grant today.
Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
And I understand that we might have differences of opinion about the grant. That's not my issue. My issue is that I want it on the agenda to talk about it. And if we have it on the agenda, we had, we had six commissioners a week ago wanted it on the agenda. I don't know why we take it off the agenda and we don't have the conversation we agreed a week ago we'd have. And then I, I respect commissioners' opinion. If they say, "We're not ready." "I don't like what's in the grant." "I'd like to have a committee look at the grant." "I'd like to do it as a study session and a whole," that's fine. But I think it stays on the agenda because that's what we agreed to do. And just because somebody doesn't think it was vetted well, or somebody doesn't like it, doesn't mean we take it off the agenda. That's why we have it on the agenda to vote on later.
Well, I mean, just, just as with the automobile thing for senior services, we sent that back to committee because it had gone to the committee and talked to them. This has not gone to the committee. No one's talked about this committee at all. And number one, the next steps, you know, to say, "Talk to Chet." I mean, he was so busy, he didn't even finish reading my email to send it out. So, so how can we say, "Give it to him so that he can do it?" So, I mean, it ended up, you did it all on your own, and that's why it's not vetted. That's why, you know, you say Commissioner Ann Sorgi made suggestions and it got changed immediately. Well, I mean, we didn't see it till Friday. That's when I first saw it. I don't know, did anyone else see it before then? So, so, you know, so, so see, so you've already talked with Tony, you've talked with Patricia and, and with Peachy. So, so is that a violation of the Open Meetings Act? I mean, now you want to talk with me about it? You want to talk, I mean, that's the problem. We're not talking, we're saying, "Send it to Chet," and that's not happening. So, so things are going directly to you. And, and, I mean, that's, that's the problem, my end. I couldn't talk to you. I didn't feel like I could talk to you because where I, that's why I sent it to Chet, yet I get an email back from you. And, and I, I couldn't answer it. I didn't feel I could because you're talking about an violation of Open Meetings Act. So, so the whole idea, and that's why you have committees. That's why you have committees, so these things can be done in committee and we don't violate that. And I know we have difficult times right now with Zoom. And I didn't want to get into this kind of thing. I just wanted to get it off. We'll get it to the committee and then it comes back how it's supposed to come back. You know, just as with, with April. And, and we've gone through this before. We had, I don't know who was Ron, was it here? Had done something and it was a late addition and we had trouble. And, and we went through a whole discussion and wasted our time. And then it was another one that came the next time. I think it was Steve Christensen with a late addition and we, and we couldn't do anything about it, but we spent a lot of time on it. And now we're doing the same thing here. So I thought it'd be a simple thing. We just take it off, get it to the committee. Input can come through. We can't, we don't not, we don't have from Friday to, to Monday to get the input on it. So, I mean, I, I thought that this was a reasonable thing. We don't have all the information. It's coming through day by day, you know? And so, I mean, that's, I guess that's my sense of it. And that's why I felt it needs to be deleted. And that's why I put it on, I, I did what I did. So, but you're right. If this, if we still want to talk about it and then don't want to send it through, then we'll have that conversation. But I don't think you're gonna like it. I mean, it just, I'm, I'm feeling like you're trying to bully us into doing this. And I don't like that myself. So are there any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. What's the motion? The motion is for the agenda with, with it deleted. Okay, all, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, so the motion fails for it exists Zoom and splits. We should do a roll call. Yeah, okay, we'll have to do a roll call on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lautner made the motion. I'd like to get the order. Yes. Okay, so Commissioner Lautner? Yes. Commissioner Rattenbach?
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
No.
Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Three to four.
Okay, Commissioner Lautner.
I would make the motion to approve the agenda by changing, um, number 10, under number 10, item seven to discussion only.
Support.
I believe that's what Commissioner Wessel said would serve his purpose tonight.
Okay, any comments about this? Commissioner Wessel.
That isn't what I said. And, and I, I, what I said was we ought to follow our rules and we ought to have it on the agenda as we agreed to have it on the agenda. And then if we wanted to vote no, I accept that. But it is on the agenda. We proposed it as an agenda item for an action item. And that's the way it ought to stand.
All right, any other comments? Okay, um, let's have a roll call on this.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
No.
Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Three, four fails.
So can we have another motion? Commissioner Wessel.
We'll approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Um, we have some late additions. Are we gonna add those in?
I, I don't know. I don't have any late additions.
Do you see as late additions?
You talking about claims and counts?
Let me see here. I don't think there are any late additions.
Yeah, we, you know, we just changed the, we don't usually do it as a late addition.
We don't need to have the, uh, the amendment and fund transfer on the agenda?
No, those are on here as amendments and transfers.
Okay.
And above, Tony.
I, I know that's there, but.
But I know, but they are different than.
On, on, we don't.
Yeah.
We're gonna do them, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All those in favor, please raise your hand or, no, let's take a roll call. Let's just do that. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sudis Little?
Yes.
Four, three, cancel.
Okay, we now have an agenda. So then that would bring us to public comment. If you have any public comment, please call 231-256-8109. So if anyone calls, we'll, we'll take that call, but we'll move on from here to, um, the action items. And the, the first one is the airport governance update proposal.
The only thing is if you pass it, oh, nevermind, let me see. Hi, I'm for public comment. Okay, I'll push on this. Go ahead, please.
I'm agreeing for the chairman to stop talking.
No, go ahead. Are you calling for public comment?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead, speak, please.
Okay, this is what I'm saying from Sutton's Bay. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Ann Sorgi for placing the subject inspection ordinance on the agenda. Um, I see potential issues in the bay of, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, you should turn, if you're watching YouTube, turn it down because there's a delay factor. So what you may be watching or hearing is different than we're hearing. So turn it down, please.
There, now it's clear.
Yep, you're, you're coming clear.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Commissioner Ann Sorgi for placing these subject inspection ordinance on the agenda. Um, I see potential issues in Sutton's Bay, in the bay itself. And I think most of the issues from the clean water group are on inland lakes. But with the water level so high, um, if you're out of the bay, and, um, Mr. Trump, you probably see it now as you're close to the bay, there's some old cottages that are right down at the lake level. And it certainly makes me think, wonder where that stuff that tang drain field is. Um, some of these old cottages down there, whoa, that's my grandparents. Um, and they're seasonal homes that are now occupied year round, or they're turned into short-term wells and are occupied with much heavier use. So there's certainly some concern that we should be looking at. So thank you for putting that on the agenda. I hope you can go forward with it this time. Thank you.
All right, sweet. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue and we'll, we'll continue on less than four minutes. If you were the airport governance.
Yeah, just, uh, if you do pass this, you have to pass, you also have to set a date for the public hearing. And I did confirm the question was what I asked last time, that the articles of the corporate act draft, you have the right to change up to your final vote. This is only the resolution to go forward and have a public hearing.
Mr. Rushton.
I would move to approve the resolution of intent to form a regional airport authority for the day-to-day. for the day-to-day operation and management of the Cherry Capital Airport.
I'll second that.
Okay, and before we get into discussion, will we have some more public comment?
Okay, I'm gonna put your own speakerphone here. Okay, go ahead, please, and turn your TV down if you are watching on YouTube, please. There's a delay between what you're seeing and what we hear here.
Thank you. This is my name as well, I'm there. Um, I thank you for going ahead with the agenda as written. I also am very pleased that, uh, with Tony's submission on the septic ordinance, he put a lot of work into this, while I'm not sure I disagree with everything in there, his point is that the commission and the Health Department's job is to protect the health of Leonoff citizens, and a septic workshop with experts would be a terrific idea, um, evaluating this issue, especially with new developments and science that can help us nail these issues down. So, thank you.
Who, who was speaking?
Gwen Elwier.
Gwen Elwier.
Yeah, she did say it. Thank you.
I think that's, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Wessel?
There's a question in the airport, uh, issue, you said the Articles of Incorporation could be changed to later date.
Yes.
Does this commit us to doing an authority, or, so there really no...
No, this is just a public hearing. This is a legal process, it has to take place to move forward, and part of the process is you have to have a public hearing. Uh, there's one scheduled in Grand Traverse to begin in December, I don't have the exact date. Commissioner Rushton, I'm not sure if you do, it's beginning, first week of December, I do know that.
I do have that date, it was discussed today at our board meeting.
If you wish to do the same as your regular board meetings, dates in December, or you can have a special meeting too, but you record, the morning executive is December 8th, and the evening regular is December 15th. So you could piggyback that before or after that, if you wish, or you can pick any date that you wish on this day.
Would you like me to include a date in the, um, motion, or would you like to have a little more discussion on that?
The date's not to be in the resolution, I mean, you could, but that's, that's not part of the resolution.
Okay.
So first, if you pass the resolution, then you have to pass a date for the public And just so you know, after the hearing, if you should go forward, the Articles of Incorporation have to be exactly the same that Grand Traverse and Leonel County would be voting on. So we're assuming, at some point after the public hearings, we may either want to have a joint meet, everyone, or form a committee between the two counties, because if it, because if it's gonna go back at some point to the board to vote on the final articles, they have to be exactly the same word for word in each counties, which I'm sure there'll be some discussion about that. As there has been here, and also Grand Traverse County, when they pass a resolution, so they have issues they want to bring up too, so we know that's gonna take part, or be part of the process.
Would this be sort of similar to the Health Department with Ben-Ze, or not, not necessarily?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, the Health Department's leaving on Ben-Ze, it's a two county, and we have the same incorporated. You know, if they approve it, we have to...
Uh, it, it depends what the issue, but yeah, in general terms, yeah, yeah.
But, but the intent of this is to move forward towards an authority. We can always say no and go back to what we have, but that's why, but the intent is to try to move forward to the authority.
And based on our joint meeting, both counties at least were interested in going forward, so that's why. And as a, as I think it was announced last week, Grand Traverse County did pass the resolution and are having a public hearing.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand, or this is a resolution, so it has to be a roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Sargi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rettenbach?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
That says when would you like a septic public hearing?
Should we do it on the 8th before our executive? I'll throw that date up there for discussion.
Well, would a public hearing be better for an evening?
That's right. That's why I thought we needed 15.
I mean, we're more likely to get people who are...
That's true, that's true, I like that idea.
Most likely it'll be a Zoom public hearing.
Yeah.
But even still...
Yeah. But they can participate easily in the evening.
Six o'clock, 15, or something.
Would that be all right? That, that would be the next Tuesday, that, before our regular meeting?
That'd be the 15th, right?
Yeah.
And what time?
Do we want to allow an hour or half an hour?
Well, you...
Can we have it, you know, like, restart our meeting, and then we have the, the open...
Or you could do it at 6:30, and just start this meeting whenever you get done with the public hearing. You don't have to put a timeline on it, because, as you know, sometimes we have a lot of comments, sometimes we have no. If you do it at 6, we could be done by 6:20, and then you have 40 minutes. If you do it at 6:30, it could take a half hour, it could take an hour, and you can legally start the meeting after the public hearing is done. So, I'm just suggesting 6:30?
Okay. Yeah, sounds good.
We all have to remember that.
So, we'll have a motion to set the public hearing on December 15th at 6:30 PM.
Do we have that motion, please?
I'll, I'll make an motion, okay.
In a second?
I thought maybe we just sign the sheet.
But it's a public hearing, so it's not a meeting, so it's...
So, did you get that, Michelle?
Motion to set a public hearing on 12/15/2020 for the Regional Airport Authority.
At 6:30 PM.
At my commission, to Lawton.
By Lawton, second, if by Rushton?
Yes. Any comments? Is this, this could be a regular vote, or do we...
If it's unanimous, then you can just go voice, if it's not, then you can...
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes, seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now then that brings us to the approval of the annual patrol car purchase. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes, I would move to allow the Sheriff's Office to order three 2021 Ford interceptor SUVs from a signature forty, the amount not to exceed $102,227, once delivered, allow for payment of the vehicles and outfeeding of the vehicles with necessary equipment, total not to exceed $121,227.
All right, Commissioner Anser?
Do we know, are we gonna run into the same problem we had last time with the equipment not being able to fit into these new vehicles, or are you, are you confident this time that we're gonna, everything's gonna work?
We're gonna run into the same problem, but I built in enough money in my request that we should be able to be okay this time.
Okay, thank you.
You've done this before.
I don't remember a lot, but sometimes you remember something.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven, zero. Then that brings us to the corrections sergeant promotion. Commissioner Lawton?
I would move to recommend, I would move that the Leonoff County Board of Commissioners amend the promotion of a sergeant in the corrections division from a temporary to permanent position.
Any other questions or statements? This would be a roll call, though.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Sargi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet?
No.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rettenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Six, one.
Thank you. So then that brings us to the information technology. Commissioner Lawton?
I would move to approve the renewal and upgrade of the Dell server maintenance agreements as quoted in the amount of $3,027, seven to six cents, with funds to come from the data processing fund ending in six, three, six.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes, um, six, or seven, zero. Thank you. Then that brings us to, um, the solid waste council, curb selection, and Trudy's on mic. Trudy, did you want to address this?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yes, I sent out an email to you to let you know that the attorney had reviewed this, had just a couple minor word changes on the proposal, and unfortunately, Solid Waste Council did not have a meeting last week, we did not have a quorum, so although I don't have a recommendation coming to you from that meeting last week, they have been supportive of a site in Lake Leonoff for many years. So, um, the request tonight is to move forward with this engineering company so that we can, uh, start the site plan review process with the township for this new site on Pop
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
There's no motion.
Really? Sorry. Commissioner Rettenbach? You're right.
I, I move, I move to, um, uh, the Board of Commissioners waive its policy on bid requirements and approve an agreement with Match and Engineering for engineering services for a new recycling site at a cost not to exceed $10,950.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. I guess we'll have to have a roll call, though.
Commissioner Rettenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Sargi?
No.
Chairman Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
No.
Four, three motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that brings us to equalization, the revised count 4402. Commissioner Wessel?
I move to approve the revised county apportionment report L-4402 in the November 10th, 2020 session. It was presented in the November, November 10th, 2020 session.
Mr. Rettenbach? Any other comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes, seven, zero. So now we have the county as a designated successor. Commissioner Wessel?
Move to approve the equalization director being the designated successor for Leonoff
Word.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. Then that brings us to number six, the, the anti-bias training next steps.
Thank you. Well, and I, uh, I do know that we all want to do what's right on this. I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not bullying, I'm not trying to bully. I, my only reservation is that I don't want it to go till June or May, and I think that we need to continually remind ourselves what's in our resolution, and say we committed to training, we committed to trying to find ways to get more representation on the county boards and commissions and, and committees, and that we would look at anything we might do to address the concerns that, that we've heard. And I don't think we're gonna sound that tonight, but I, I would, I would like, and if we can do this, uh, then I feel less strongly about the 2% grant that's on the agenda, I would like to put this as a priority discussion piece during our organizational meeting, and with the goal that we will do something in January, some sort of plan in January to move us forward, because I think people are expecting that we do something, some follow-up. We had a presentation, and I understand that it was just one presentation, and it was a, a lecture of a history and, and some comments by the panelists, we didn't have much discussion of that. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk much about what we heard. And, and I'm an educator, and I know that learning doesn't happen if you don't process what you experience. So all I would like to do is say, let's commit ourselves to, for the next few months, have this be something that we all collectively talk together about. And where we end up, who knows? And, and, and I don't think I have the answers. And, and, and I would just like to have that conversation, so that is my, that is my goal.
Mr. Rushton?
And I thank you for those comments. I am not ready to commit to making decisions about action items in January, but, um, from my perspective, I believe, well, let me clarify that, because commissioners coming in month number one have a lot of things to digest. However, it doesn't mean we can't begin the process of having a discussion and determining where we want to go with this, how do we want to manage, uh, how this board is going to move forward. And I don't find that unreasonable. Uh, and like you, um, are we gonna get it 100% right? Maybe not. But as you pointed out, it takes a while to digest information, and I have pointed that particular item out to you personally. I'm the kind of person, I like to read, I like to examine, I like to explore, I like to investigate, I like to see everything that's out there, and quite frankly, we just haven't been provided that opportunity. So until that opportunity is provided, I'm not gonna support, um, next steps, I'm just
I mean, this is the conversation I think that we should have, before we go for any planning or anything. This, this is what I thought next step was, is we go through what we've, the, the training that we've had, what's happened, you know, and, you know, and that's what I understood when you brought this as a late addition. If you read these items that you talk about, you know, I support that. But, but when, when you look at your grant, that's what I don't support. I don't support the items, you know, the, the bringing in other people from, who've just formed a, a group, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, or having them tell us what our policies are gonna be. I mean, that's, when I read that grant, that's, that's, I thought we've gone too far, too far, too soon, if that's what we're trying to do. And so, and, and if we ask for the grant like that, you know, then we're committing ourselves to that, and we're committing the two new commissioners to it, who have been no input at all, and, and the way I read it is, for the next, you know, five, six years, we're committing commissioners to that, supposedly, or we're gonna have to give the money grant back, so. So, this is when we talked about next steps, this is what I thought. We talk about what we've been through, what we're thinking we would do in the future, and then we make a plan. We don't, we don't say, give it to chat. I never thought we, this, our whole plan is gonna go through chat to go to you. That's, that's when I talk about bullying, that's, it's all going to you, and you're making all the decisions. You know, even when, when Tony makes his suggestion, then you make the decision if they're right or wrong. This board didn't make it, and, and, and that's, that's why I call it bullying, because you're, you're telling us what you want, and you're saying we have to go by that. And you're, and you put it on here as a late addition with vague things that are on there, but then you go into details. Instead of applying for vague things, which is what I thought we were doing, we've got a lot of detail, and we've got some things that I, I don't want to talk about the specifics, but I'm not very happy with them. You know, and, and, and so, so I like this idea that we have next steps, and I think we can have... And I think we can have a whole commission meeting about that and that, and, and make our plan. But I certainly don't want to send out and ask for money from the tribe so that we are committed to whatever we've told and we will do. You know, and if, if we want to get into the details about what I like and don't like, I don't want to because that's, you, you, people tend to take it the wrong way, no matter how you put it. And, and so I, if we have this open discussion, it's not allowed to be open. And that's, and to, to me, that's a problem already that we have. Yes?
I, I don't disagree with very much of what you've just said. I did label the grant draft and I did not commit us to any specific action in that draft grant. And I brought it to the committee for other, to the Board of Commissioners to, to have a, have a discussion, knowing that it would probably be modified. My only issue, Mr. Bonnick, was that that's, we don't do business the way you were suggesting it. We don't agree that something's going to be on the agenda and then take it off.
We, we, we got something told and you just, I'm sorry, I think you interrupted.
So I, I will, I can support what you're suggesting. I can support that we hold off on the grant. I, I support that if we commit to having the discussion. And a slow discussion is fine, but I think we need to have the discussion.
Right. I'm, I'm agreeing with that completely. Any other comments? You know, Commissioner Redenbach?
I would make a motion to recommend, uh, put the um anti-bias training next steps discussion to the committee of the whole on December third.
On December thirty?
I don't think we have a
Said she said December third.
Yeah, is it on December third?
No.
Oh, I'm saying you want that day. Yeah, yeah, I, I can check.
Add it to that, yeah, add it to that meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay. Commissioner Sudas Little raised her hand for the second. So Commissioner Ansarke, did you want to speak on it?
Yes, please. I, I have a concern about the two new commissioners not having a voice here. And they will not be sworn in until the end of the year. So maybe the orientation session is probably a better, rather than the boards and commission on December third. That's just my suggestion. But I do feel it's important to at least solicit their input. And, you know, the other one's going to be dealing with it, not me. So I, I, I really think we need to get their input.
Mr. Redback?
In public comment this evening, one of the commissioner elects, Gwen Alguayer, supported that we go ahead with the agenda as written. And I think that that indicates that she's willing to make public comment if we meet in December, as would be available to the other commissioner-elect. So I think that, you know, we need to have this discussion. As Commissioner Wessel said before, we passed the resolution back in August, was it? And again, you know, things get delayed. Let's not put this off any longer, let's have the discussion.
Commissioner Wessel?
And I would assume that if we have that discussion, that we wouldn't have to make any decisions at that time, but we begin discussion about what we, as, as seven commissioners heard. And, and, and that's a start to the process, but it doesn't commit anybody to anything in the future. So I support the motion and would urge us not to try to have it as an action item, but as a discussion item on December third.
Any other comments? Mr. Rushton?
Personally, I would like to see some sort of a study session where we can sit down and address this issue independent of an executive committee or, or some such thing. Is that what you're referring to?
It's a boards and commissions on December third.
Oh.
Yeah, just a clarification, you agreed to have a committee of the whole meeting December third to review the people interested on boards, commissions. And the motion, I believe, to add this to that agenda.
That's what, yes, that's what my
Okay, well, that was the point that I was trying to make. I, I think we need to sit down and have this discussion independent of other board meetings, because who knows? It may take us an hour, it may take us five hours. I want the time if, um that's where I'm at. I want the time.
Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any other comments? Commissioner Sudas Little?
Yes. I think it's important to begin the discussion too. And if, I, I can appreciate what uh has been said. I think Commissioner Wessel was starting the conversation, that was his intent, and I appreciate that. I understand and agree, you know, with much of what you have said, Commissioner Bonnick. And I think that picking another day in December makes sense if, if we want to have enough time um to ensure that we really can devote a full conversation to it, then I have no objection of moving from the third to another date, but I'd say let's keep it in December. We're not going to have any action, but it's a beginning. It gives us a chance, while things are still somewhat fresh in our minds, to talk it through. And then at our orientation or a special meeting in January, we can finish up and, and begin to put plans in place. There's a lot we can do. Some of the ideas Commissioner Wessel tried to put in the grant, whether they're in the grant or, or not in the grant, there are things that we could look at, what we could do. And I would hate to lose that and also the momentum that we've made thus far. So I'd propose we pick another date besides the third, if the third is going to make it too long. And I can understand what Commissioner Rushton is saying, you know, those, the boards and commission meetings can get very long. So if we want to pick another date, let's do it. But let's keep it in December and get it done.
Mr. Redback?
Yeah, I am willing to amend my motion to another date and have another committee of the whole meeting, um, which, you know, we could do at another date. But, you know, December is difficult for people and I, I just don't think typically that our committees and commissions meetings have gone over an hour and a half or so. So I didn't think that it would make that meeting too long if we could do it on the third with, in combination with the committees, committees and commissions selections.
Either way.
That's a question for Chad and it's a question for Michelle. Do you have orientation planned?
Uh, I'm trying to put one together. I'm looking actually, your, your, your organization meeting is January fifth in the morning. I'm hoping that we, do you remember the last couple of years, we tried to do it in December, it was very difficult. So we did it after the, after the organization meeting. So actually, I talked to tenderly Mr. Norfolk about coming in here and doing a seminar on the legal issues that they have done before. But I was hoping that we could have all day session, but I don't have the details yet to
Thank you.
Talk about that.
And my question for Michelle is, when do you typically swear in the new commissioners? I haven't picked a date yet, I've been waiting to talk to the judge. If that's not available, I'm just going to swear them in myself. And I can do that at any time, it doesn't have to be done as a group.
Last time we did it at the organization, we had a retired judge come. And I thought that was a nice touch. And sometimes if we had our organization meeting and, or our orientation December, we had We did after that. We did go in the bus ride afterwards. And sometimes if we had an orientation in December, then we had the judge, I think one, two, four time, four years ago, Judge Powers came, and two years ago was Judge Phillips that came to the January meeting. So we're still working that. With this whole COVID thing, it's difficult to plan.
And to continue, um, personally, I don't think December is a great month for this. We've got two commissioners that are going to, this is really not going to affect them long term. However, we have two incoming commissioners that will affect them for the next two years. So um I would like to start this conversation fresh in the new year, early on if we can, the earlier the better. So I know I look at my calendar and I see the obligations I currently have on there, with some medical procedures planned as well as holiday time. And I would hate to miss that per session. So I would like to see a role to the new board. And, you know, those commissioners that are exiting, I would welcome a written opinion or a written report if you so feel the need that you want to weigh in or to, you know, but I'm anxious to see and provide that uh interaction when the new board is seated.
Commissioner Sudas Little?
Well, I can appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Rushton. Let's go ahead, in my opinion, let's go ahead on the third, because I think this is the board that went through the training. And having that discussion on the third, I agree with what, what Commissioner Redenbach just said. It, she's right. The board and commission is not that long, it certainly is much less time than the orientation activities are going to be. So I think we have a much better shot at having a, when making concrete plans. It's, it's kind of a chance to process together those of us who went through it together. That does not preclude another session in January, starting fresh with the new board. But I do think it's important to have closure with this board. Even though we're not making concrete plans moving forward, we can at least discuss and get input and ideas with those of us who went through the experience together. So I am going to support the motion as it currently has been stated.
Any other comments?
I, I know, I, I actually recommended in my email for going to the organizational meeting, but I didn't think about that meeting being an all day session. You know, I guess I, I was thinking it was going to be like the last time where we were a couple of hours and then we had it, you know, where we got sworn in and we introduced each other and then we were going home. So I'm, I'm not sure, I don't, you know. So, because I, I know, I know Rick wants to be present at it. He had, he had, he had called me today to say that, that he would like to be present at it, you know. But, but, but you're right too, that this is, so, you know, I guess I'm kind of torn between what I thought and, and I like the idea of it being a discussion thing, because I do think that's what we need to do is process. And I think Commissioner Sudas Little is, but I don't know that either Tony or Peachy really want to go through. Make them do it, so I, I don't, I don't know. I'm just not sure.
And he has a motion.
What's that?
Oh, there's a motion.
He has a motion and can we have a second? I know that.
So we are, we're going to have to vote, yes.
And so the motion is for December third?
December third, after or part of the other meeting. Commissioner Ansarke?
Thank you. I, again, I want to repeat myself, I think we need the two new commissioners present, I really do. So I'm, I'm not supporting the motion because I want the two new commissioners here. And I think that that's, I think you have to have, I think you have to have. So that's, this is my two cents again.
Mr. Wessel?
I, I think we have to have the two new commissioners here to plan our next steps. I don't think we need to have the new commissioners here to talk about what we went through together. And I want you there and I want Peachy there because we were in this room, we did it together. Second thing I'd say is that we're sending a message if we put it off. We have put it off for a while. And we owe it to our constituents, I think, to have some discussion about what our volunteer residents did for us. We haven't really processed it. So I, I, I support the motion, no decisions. We start in January with the new commissioners and then we arrive at some decisions on next steps. But the purpose of December three is to talk about the experience that we've already had.
You know, I, I would disagree that we put it off. It was only 12 days ago that we, that we had our, our, our first session. So, so yes, the resolution was in, but it took us a while just to organize that first session. And we're only talking 12 days ago. So it isn't, it isn't like we've been putting it off. You know, and now we're into Thanksgiving and Christmas and COVID's all changed again too, you know. So it, it, it's, everything's pretty fluid.
Commissioner Rushton?
Well, you basically said what I was going to say. And as I mentioned earlier, I don't see that the house is on fire. I mentioned that whatever decision comes from this, the commissioners that are outgoing, what impact is there going to be on next steps? Other than, thank you. However, new commissioners will have a huge impact on this. I digress.
So then we'll just have a roll call vote on this.
Before you
Yes. Go ahead.
May I make a suggestion? Can we quit calling this next steps and instead call it processing our anti-bias training? And, and keep it as two separate things? That we as a group who experienced this together have a chance to talk about that experience, because I would like to have Commissioner Ansarke and Commissioner Redenbach, you know, share that with us. We are the group who went through this. That's not next steps, that's processing a training that we had. And then let's label the next steps for the January meeting with the new commissioners present. The new commissioners can participate, be in the room, commit by Zoom, they can even be in by Zoom, uh, at, at, if we discuss our experience with the anti-bias training and call it that. But let's reserve the next steps for January, that way we're not muddying the waters. And we have an opportunity to do both. And have a nice conclusion of the experience we went through. Anyway, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Rushton?
I don't like to wear my emotions on my sleeve. I don't always like to share my emotions in public. We're still processing the information that I received. And I have not found the place where I need to share all of my emotions with my fellow commissioners. So I will not be attending that type of a meeting, just so you know.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Redenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Stotislow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansarke?
No.
Commissioner Bonnick?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Fails three to four.
The motion fails four, four to three, just three to four. So then I would make the suggestion that at least we put this on December's agenda again, you know, and address it at that time.
Sorry, what month?
December.
I'm sorry, December's. And then we'll address it again, just so we keep the cooling and we don't, you know, forget about it. So Yes?
I'm sorry. I had a point of clarification. The characterization of such a meeting that Commissioner Rushton just made is absolutely not what I had in mind either. I don't think I've ever been to a professional meeting where I've had training and then we all bore our soul and had talked about emotions. I was looking at something that was very professional that fit within the information we had had. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification because that certainly would not be a meeting that I would want to have either.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Rushton.
You know, and I think you make a very good point with your comment because all along this path, I have been challenged by some of the language that is used. A certain word will be used and my perception or my definition of that word is totally the opposite of the person who's presenting that word. Case in point, when I look at the resolution that we passed, I had a perception of a certain meaning. But as I go through the course and learn more, I learned that these words that we have used have quite a different meaning than my perception of its meaning. So in your opinion, you were looking for professional feedback. However, in my opinion, I saw where there was an expectation for emotional input. So thank you for clarifying that.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rittenbach.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you've requested that we have it on the December agenda again. And I don't know if that was in the form of a motion, but if so, I would second that. I think that we need to continue to have this discussion. We are the ones that passed the resolution. I would like to be able to comment about the presentation and the training that we had. And it doesn't have to be anything written in stone that people have to carry forward into the next term, but I do feel that it would be fair to talk about again.
Yes, it only has to be one commissioner request to have it on the agenda. So that, I was just making sure that it got on and I didn't, you know, I just didn't want to have to leave it to Ty to put it on.
Okay, I appreciate it. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So, and maybe we don't want to call it next steps. We can just call it a processing thing, but it will be on our agenda and we can process that. And then I just thought we take as much time as we want at that time because it is our executive committee meeting and we aren't delaying it too long. So I just thought that, you know.
I'll bring my funds.
All right. But thank you for making the second work. Appreciate that. All right, so then that would bring us to, well, are there any other comments before we move on? Okay, let's move on to renewal agreement with Raymond Robson. Commissioner Lautner?
I move to approve the service outlined in the agreement relative to the Affordable Care Act, funds to come from accounting, contractual services, ending in 801 at the rates outlined in Schedule A, service and fees in the amount of $3,900 with Raymond Robson. Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. Then the year-end adjustments. Commissioner Lautner?
I would move to approve and authorize the county clerk to make any year-end agreements and transfers deemed necessary to avoid year-end deficits in the various departments' budgets within the general fund. No transfers or adjustments to go beyond the funds in contingency. All transfers and adjustments required signature of the county clerk.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Rushton.
Move to approve the purchase of an FBI 4730 folder, inserter, sealer from Automated Business Equipment of Portland, Michigan at a cost not to exceed $14,000. Those funds are to come from Fund Number 645 with a balance from adjusted reserves from the general fund transfer.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Then do we have the agreement, the maintenance agreement? Commissioner Rittenbach?
Yeah, I move to approve a one-year maintenance agreement with Automated Business Equipment at a cost not to exceed $1,400 per year, funds to come from Fund 645.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Now we have a potential septic ordinance. Commissioner Hattori?
This, I didn't anticipate that this would be a long discussion, but the intent here was to decide if there was board support for looking at this issue again from a limited perspective. And I gave everybody my recommendation on how we could move forward in a pilot program is the way I look at it, to say, let's try this. I'm not a fan of point of sale. I think we should target it to where there may be an issue. There is no documented issues out there today, but there is the potential. And I think we could make a targeted aim at looking at, looking at septic ordnance in certain limited circumstances, as I indicated in my proposal. So my intent here was to see, you've had an opportunity to look at this packet and see if this is something the board would want to do going forward. Obviously, I made my recommendation, but I'm looking for input here from the board to see if this is something you want to move forward with or not. Thank you.
Mr. Rushton.
And Tony, I wanted to thank you for that in-depth report. I found it very interesting. And my question in regards to this is, you know, in our prior discussions, we had talked about updating the health department's records. So has that been completed now? Do they have all the information cataloged, organized? So if we were to ask them, how many properties, what properties do we have out there that we have no information on? It's kind of a question for Tony.
Okay, go ahead.
The health department has had, everything is digitized. It's all done. They are still going through the process of removing private information. So that is not done. You know, they're working on it as they can work on it, but unfortunately, COVID has put a big, big damper on how much time they have available for other things. So I'm just being honest, that, you know, they have to complete looking at all those records to make sure that there is no private information going to be put out there for public viewing. So, and incidentally, Ben Z County now has also approved to have their records digitized. They saw the value of what we had already done.
In refreshing memories, I don't have that information in front of me. I apologize. I should have probably reviewed that before today's meeting. I was under the misconception that this was moved to December's executive for discussion. And actually, I would really like to see that moved to December 3 for further discussion so I am a little better prepared. But in the interim, my question was, it seems to me that you indicated targeted areas. So what were you referring to in that regard?
Go ahead.
Basically, I went through the process of looking at this, how, what's the science behind pathogens in the health department? What is the health department chartered to do and all that kind of stuff? And, you know, I'm going to be honest, you know, the health department has been so successful across the United States that there aren't a lot of cases where they can document that pathogens came from septic systems or wastewater treatment lines. You know, there's not a lot of cases out there. So, you know, they're kind of victims of their own success. But, so I looked at it and I said, okay, how do they come up with these things? And, you know, the health department uses isolation distances as far as how they set up, you know, how far septic systems have to be from wells and, you know, from groundwater, all that kind of stuff. There's real science behind these things. They're just not picking numbers out of the air. So I looked at that and said, okay, where are the cases where they have had problems? And there's basically two instances where you, they have been documented cases where pathogens have made people sick. And when I say documented, both in Michigan, the health departments are required to report to, it's not DEQ, it's Eagle now, they are required to turn that information in and the state is required to turn it into the EPA. And you can look at these reports are out there about people, how they get sick from, you know, drinking water and all that kind of stuff. There's basically two cases where you have problems. And they both have to do with rapid transfer of partially treated septic effluent from the drain fields getting out, moving too quickly. And basically, your drain fields is where the final processing takes place. And if the drain field, if it moves through the drain field too quickly, it gets into the water and that's where you, people get sick. So those two cases are where, you know, they actually have cases out there where they documented this. One is in limestone formations where you're building right close to the surface, where the limestone formations are right close to the surface and that limestone is just like Swiss cheese. The stuff goes right through it. It doesn't stay in there. So if you don't construct your drain field with enough fill above that porous limestone, that stuff just goes right through. So that, there's, that was the most often case is where drain fields were improperly constructed, either because they were old and they didn't know any better back then or somebody didn't do something very, what they were supposed to do. The other case is where the drain field is too close to the water table. And in Michigan, the state, there's a state law out there that says you've got to have two feet of undisturbed soils from the, you know, where the drain field's going to be down to the water table. So if you're trying to put a drain field in and you don't have that initial two feet, you can, the state allows you to make, allows you to fill in above that, make a mound system. We don't like, for some reason, we don't like that here in Leila County, but the state allows that and they've been using it for hundreds of years downstate where there's whole counties that are basically low and, you know, the water tables, you know, they got to have drains everywhere to drain the water away. But anyway, that's the other case where it doesn't have a chance for the drain, the drain field doesn't have a chance to finish killing off the pathogens. So those are the two cases that I found where you actually, they actually documented problems. So I said, okay, that, we don't have limestone in Leila County. It's close to the surface. It's, you know, 150, 200 feet down where you'll start finding limestone in Leila County. Over by Alpina, they have a problem over there, but we don't have that problem here. Our problem is systems, our only chance of having a problem is where those systems are too close to groundwater. And we probably got some old systems, and I know somebody that told me, says, yeah, you know, when they put that in, it was underwater. That's a problem.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Tony, and I appreciate that. I also myself have not been entirely through, through the document. You picked a really bad weekend to send this home with us for homework. I'll have you know. So I think you're on the right track and I think you touched on where I think, where I've known there could be problems if we do have them in the county. So what I would like for us to do is get a proposal from our equalization department that as soon as we can get those digitized records, see what we're taking for them to overlay those and find out where, especially around our lakes, we may not have documented systems. And have that be our first step in maybe then trying to identify whether there's a record missing, whether there is a system, is not a system, is there, whatever, is there, is it working, et cetera, and go from there. But I think that we have to take these, these new digitized records and utilize them in that fashion and find out, find out exactly what we are dealing with or, you know, if we have a problem, where is the problem? Is it a big problem? Is it a small problem? Is it around the lakes where we think it might be? Is it not, et cetera? And so I hope that they can get those, the private information out of those records relatively soon so that we can get that proposal out of the equalization department.
Commissioner Wessel.
I thank Commissioner Anzorgi for doing the work. It was a lot of reading and I'd like him to be here to have further discussion with us. And I'd like to see this on the agenda for our December executive committee, at least to talk about it. That would be my, my recommendation.
Commissioner Rittenbach?
Yeah, I would also like to have it on the agenda for December. I think, Tony, that we are expressing an interest and there are suggestions of how we might move forward with this and we do see it as an important issue. So, yeah, I think it'd be great to have it on the December agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Stotis.
And to make it unanimous, I'll agree. Tony, it was an excellent coverage of what, and it was very useful reading for me. And I too would like to see it on the agenda so we can explore it more. Thank you for doing it.
Commissioner Hattori?
I don't know how, you know, my little report that I put together, if we can make that available to the public so that they are prepared for the executive meeting.
We can attach it to the minutes.
You know, just some ways that everybody watches.
I think it can be put on the website. I don't think, you know, that'd be.
You know, I don't necessarily think, I don't, you know, I want people to have the opportunity to digest it too.
I was wondering, do you know why they don't allow the race ones? I've gotten a whole bunch of information from Ray Pfla uh all about that. He's really pushing it and said, yeah, go ahead.
Want to say something? I probably shouldn't.
It's a dish wall.
It's never stopped him before.
Careful, Tony, you've got another month to serve.
The reason is that they were using the health code as a mechanism to decide where people should or should not build. And that is not what the health code is supposed to be used for. That's what zoning is for. You address that through zoning. And, you know, I understand that there's a lot of people out there that don't want to see buildings in certain locations, but that's what zoning is for. It's not supposed to be done through the health code. You know, like I said, you know, we don't allow normal mound systems here in Leila County. Downstate, there are whole counties that they've been using it for 100 years because if they don't build mounds, they can't have septic systems, you know. So it's, it's not something that's new. So, it's, it's not something that's new. It's not something that's unproven. It's a mechanism to control where people build, and that's the wrong, the health code's the wrong place to be doing that.
Commissioner Russell.
As you well know, I've never served on the Board of Health. I read a little bit about, you know, different issues on septic over the years, but I'm hoping that you can connect the dots for me, maybe for the December 3 meeting. How does, how can we best utilize the digital records to identify and weed out those problematic systems or areas?
It's December 8.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
December 8.
Yeah, 3rd is for commissions.
Oh, sorry. Okay, December 8. Correct.
Go ahead.
The digitized records at the health department are only going to show you those systems that they have records for, and a lot of those records aren't going to tell you where the system is located on the property. What I was suggesting in my proposal was to say, this board with input from health department, I don't care who, you know, who gives you the input, we set a certain distance to say, if your house, and we look at our GIS maps, and if I can see your house is within so many feet, whatever that feet, whatever that measurement is, if your house is within so many feet of a stream or a lake, you got to have your system inspected.
Because of the water level?
Because those, potentially, those are the places where the drain fields may be too close to the water table. That's the only, that's the only way I think we are going to ever know. You know, the digitized records aren't going to tell you anything, and I'm going to be honest with you. They're not going to tell you, only the most recent ones have maps to say, here's where your drain field's located in relation to the house. The ones from 1972, there's no drawings, they're, yeah, there was a system in 1972. Doesn't tell you anything.
Okay, and that's the clarification that I needed because for me, I went back and looked at my septic because we had put a new one in, and.
You probably had a drawing.
Yes, and just last week, I had to have a new well put in. And of course, a drawing came with it, and there was a lot of discussion with the guy who came from the health department about, you know, positioning.
Isolation distance.
All of that, and I found it very interesting and intriguing. So, I'm open to learning a little bit more about how we can best utilize the process to take care of the problems that we have out there in our community without a blanket ordinance. Because I don't think it's necessary.
Commissioner Reddman.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, we do have mound systems in the county. There are mound systems that occur. The health department is against putting mounds in too close to those rivers and lakes and groundwater areas, and that's where the confusion has become, but we do have mounds in the, in the county that exist. They just have to be a certain distance away from those sources of water. And, you know, we've agreed now to put this on the December agenda, and I think that people are bringing up some interesting things that we can address in December, but are we having the conversation tonight or are we having it in December?
Commissioner Butler. Well, it sounds like we're going to have it again when everybody can read all the information, and we'll have it again in December. So, any other questions or statements? Please go on.
Yeah, I just had a statement that I wanted to, to be answered. Tony, he's absolutely right. They, while it won't tell us some things, it will tell us other things in the knowledge that what we're going to get is by relaying those maps is find out, what I hear most about are the concern with, around the lake with cottages that don't have a system, or the system is pre-72. It's, so that's going to be the most telling thing is what it doesn't say. So, we'll find out what cottages are pre-72 and, and most likely need to be addressed.
All right, I'd like to move on then to the Grand Rapids Band 2% allocation request.
Chairman Blake.
Yes.
Based upon the discussion and decisions that we made under item 6, I recommend that we do not take action on the item number 7 under this agenda.
I will support. So, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Clarification, the motion, is your motion to approve?
No, he wants to.
I was just speaking to number 7.
Just number 7.
See.
I think the problem would be good to that point, just not make a motion.
Right. Right. That's true. We don't want to, we don't like to make negative motions, so.
My second follow-up motion was going to be that I recommended approval of the remaining.
Right.
1 through 6. Okay. Support. I don't know what's on the floor.
There's a motion to.
There is a negative motion on the floor, but he's really, the administrative point that we don't, because then your, your yes means no, and your no means yes.
It wasn't seconded, it wasn't seconded.
Yeah.
It was seconded.
It was seconded.
So, I'm going to ask the motion maker if he wants to withdraw.
I, well, just let me restate the motion I thought I was, I just made was just seconded. That we delete grant number 7 and approve grants 1 through 6.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. All right. Any questions about that?
Was that seconded or I rushed it then?
Yes. You used the second.
It was actually. I think it might have been myself or you. I know it wasn't seconded.
Any other questions or statements? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you very much.
If it's 6 to 1, you shouldn't have moved.
Well, I'm the one who voted no.
Okay.
And that's only because of the, well, you guys know.
We didn't. Check your vote.
Right. Okay, so now we're at the vehicle auction bid awards.
Yeah, Laurel was an update.
I only have a chance, we have four right now that are.
Okay, did you sit down so people can hear you?
We, we currently have four that are up for auction. We held back on the one with the lowest miles in the event that you decided to perhaps let senior services have that. So, of those three, I only really had time to post two on the auction site. We received two bids, they were under the reserve. One person followed through with returning my call, and he said he would accept the bid, and that's what you have in front of you right now. I'm going to rebid out the one that I can't get ahold of the guy at, and then the fourth remaining vehicle, and that will be on your December agenda. So, tonight you're just approving an award for the one.
Okay. Okay. So, I would move that the Board of Commissioners approve the sale of a retired 2015 Ford police interceptor with the VIN number as stated to Eric Phelps of Grand Rapids, Michigan in the amount of $4,996.11 with funds to be deposited into 673 account.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you, Laurel. So then that's a potential extension of resolution 202013 authorizing moratorium on county hiring.
And the clerk pointed out that if you do make this motion, you need to have a deadline date, so we're suggesting through December 31st, 2021. That way you can review it after that.
Commissioner Russell.
I move to approve the resolution number 2020, resolution authorizing a moratorium on county hiring, creation of new positions, and filling of vacant positions as presented to the Board of Commissioners until 12/31/21.
Support.
Commissioner Russell, I'd like to speak to it because I, I think typically we do, we do approve the number of positions, and then department heads can fill those if there's a resignation, and generally I support that. I think because we're not sure where we're going with COVID, this allows us a little bit of flexibility to, if we get a resignation, it allows us to examine our priorities, examine our staffing. So, I think in these times it's wise to do this, although we typically wouldn't do it in a normal situation.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
I don't have a problem renewing this. I just question whether you want to do it for a whole year. And I'm not going to be here, so, you know, but you could, if, if you do do it for the whole year, if the situation with the COVID vaccines works out as everybody is hoping that it will, you may not need to do this for the entire year, and keep that in the back of your mind that maybe come June, you don't have to keep doing it. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful of that.
Commissioner Russell.
Yes, I would like to amend the motion in specific, specifically the date to be June 30th of 2021.
Commissioner Anzorbi, I would support that. Do you want to speak to it?
I can. I really have no problem doing it six months at a time. I guess I was thinking with our intent to do a whole year, that we could change, if we wanted to, we could rescind this mid-year and.
If you remember.
It's easier. But it's probably easier to do it six months at a time. I have no problem with it either way. I, I kind of run through staffing in my mind, and I, I couldn't imagine where we would add anybody in this next year, especially in light of everything going on and us kind of, I want to say, getting back on our feet, hopefully, here at the county. But that being said, we can do it six months. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, and just do it another six months if it looks likely.
Commissioner Russell.
Well, I think there are reasons other than COVID to do it as well. I think it allows us an opportunity as, as our business changes, as technology changes, to, when we have a resignation, to take a look at priorities. And it just may be that our needs have changed, and I don't think it's bad practice to review vacancies when they occur along with the administrator and the department heads and make a decision and see if our priorities have changed.
Forever. Any other statements? So, first on the amendment, and then, then we, so I just do a whole, it's all about this.
Um, excuse me, I had a question. Could you repeat the motion? Is it for, is it for six months or is it for a year?
It's, the amendment is, the which we'll vote on first is for six months. And, and if that passes, then we will vote on the whole thing amended, and then if it doesn't pass, then we will vote on the original one.
Okay.
And just for clarification, six months is June, not six months from.
Right.
I think I mentioned the date, June 30th.
Yes.
So, I'm sure we're clear on that.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Soslow.
Yes.
Commissioner Russell.
No.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet.
No.
Commissioner Lawton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
No.
Passes 4 to 3.
Okay, 4 to 3. So, 2, 230 is just the date. So, now we'll vote on the amended motion.
No roll call still?
I don't, I don't think we need a roll call on this one. But I, everyone understand now we're voting on it for the six months at, you know, this, the same moratorium. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Then brings us then to, what's the subscription of the monkey?
Yeah, survey monkey. That's what I'm trying to. At this one, I'd like to hold off to December. We are trying a new system now. I'm looking at some other options too, so at this point, I don't feel comfortable going forward with this recommendation.
We don't need a monkey?
We don't need a survey monkey at this, we don't need to spend the money to purchase this at this point. That may change next month, so it's okay with everyone, I just like to just forward this to December and see where we are in terms of whether you get to allocate the funds or not. So, if there's no motion, I'll just put it forward to December. Everybody wants to proceed with that.
Sounds good. So, then, then we'll move on then to the resolution on approval of our violation of remote meetings. Correct it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
So moved? Tony gave the motion.
No, I don't want that one.
Commissioner West.
We're on the remote meetings resolution, correct?
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution to ratify and confirm actions approved by the Board of Commissioners during remote meetings.
Support.
All those. Well, this is a resolution? Yes, we, that's, that's going to be a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Soslow.
Yes.
7 to 0.
Thank you. So, that's resolution on veterans. Commissioner Lawton.
Yes. I would move that the Lees County Board of Commissioners approve of the Lees County Resolution 2020-dash, resolution in honor of Veterans Day. Second.
Okay, so a roll call. Any comments? So, we, this would be.
Don't you have to approve it? We already did. No, that's a different, no, that's completely different. That's temporary to make a full-time sergeant.
Oh.
Commissioner Lawton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Soslow.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet.
Yes.
7 to 0.
Commissioner Russell.
Um, I would move to allow the sheriff's office to promote two deputies to sergeant for frontline supervision effective January 1 of 2020.
Laura, can we have that up here? No, that's a separate one. The first one was, there's a.
Correction.
Sergeant White.
Oh, yeah.
Was, I believe, you, you added a temporary one in the summer, and then you approved that on a full-time basis. These are two separate positions.
Sorry.
That's why it's different. Correct, is that?
Yes. And was it seconded? I'm sorry, I got it.
Yes, I heard seconded down here.
Okay. This will be a roll call.
Okay, that was Rushton and West, correct on that one?
Correct.
Sorry, I'm running out of sheets just a second. Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Soslow.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorbi.
No.
Commissioner Bonnet.
No.
Commissioner Lawton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes.
5 to 2.
Motion passes 5 to 2. Thank you very much. Now, I'll have to promote. All right, then, do we have any committee reports, recommendations, and resolutions?
Do you want my view of financials?
Oh, we better, yes. Do you have any questions?
I just got a couple here, quick questions. In the league claims, you have, on page three, there was, professional services, it looks like an attorney, just $1,000, but was that a dispute, or did they, is it on my part, or whose question?
No.
I'm sorry, is that building safety?
It is the lawsuit concerning the incident in North Florida.
With Swazinski?
The attorney for the appeal process.
Yeah, we won that lawsuit and all of that, so.
That, the lawsuit was covered by insurance, however, this was the appeal process.
Instead of paying it from Chet's budget, he passed it off to Paul.
Which it should be.
Well, it should be, okay, thank you. I didn't know, I hadn't heard of another, it's been so calm in that department, and that was good, so I was a little alarmed seeing attorney bill.
Yeah.
He represented us during the appeal.
I think it came to like $2,300 or something, so.
Okay, good. And then I was just curious, a little further down, we had Tros Brothers, and there's the jail car. Was that a deer, or was that hit by, because I know they're really moving out there.
That was affixed to a door. Someone, we don't know who, either opened the door or something and damaged the passenger side door of the car. It looked substantial enough, I told him to get it fixed.
Gotcha, okay. And I have a clarification. You made the comment Chet's budget.
Sorry, Board budget.
Pardon me?
Sorry, Board of Commissioners budget.
Thank you.
That's okay. You didn't pass it off to Paul, he did.
I was just wondering if we now have created a separate budget for the administrator.
You do in the, no, in your Board, yes, in your Board of Commissioners, you have separate attorney fees that he signs off on. So when the bill came.
You wanted to go out there.
No, he gave it to Paul. It says Board of Commissioners, it doesn't say Paul on the bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions for financials?
Yeah, the only other one was, and it's not a biggie, I was just surprised, and it might have been a regular payment accounts, but I think it was also for the jail, but it was some kind of nit, nitrix gloves or something, they just seemed, are they extra?
They're rubber gloves, nitrate gloves.
Nitrate gloves?
Yes.
So pretty heavy duty, they just seemed like, they just seemed expensive to me. Oh, they are.
It's the only kind we use in the medical industry.
Okay, so that's, this is for handling.
Is that the one where they're ordering like 80 boxes at a time or something?
Well, there's eight liners, but that's, it may be buildings, it's EMS, buildings and grounds, so emergency services, does that map that?
Right, so some of that's going to COVID, and some of that's going to LEC. Yep, so if it's COVID-related, if they had to purchase items because of COVID additionally on top of what they normally do, that's where we're getting, we're putting it into that EMS COVID-19 expense.
But there's like, there's 80, and there's 13, $1,300, so there's just two important kinds of gloves.
I think what's happening is, it's, the gloves are one-time use, so every time they're issuing snacks or meals, there, it's a new glove.
Yeah, it's because of the situation.
Yep, yep, so, so normally, we might have, not even half of that.
I think a good problem, if I can weigh in on that, is when you go with a cheaper glove, they rip.
Don't want that.
And we don't want that liability.
So I was really more curious, I was arguing about.
Yeah, no, 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 yep.
Never heard of a Nitrile, or Nitrile.
Yep, Nitrile, yep, it's, I think it's a type of.
Been around for a long time.
Box, yeah.
I use it in my work, too.
Yep, and that's all that EMS COVID-19 is what we're looking to get from that CDB grant, so as much as we can push towards whatever extra we are.
Okay, all right, that was, that was it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So any committee reports, recommendations, or resolutions? Mr. Reddick.
Yeah, I had a comment about claims that I wanted to make. On page six, there's a charge from the sheriff for books, $464, or $54, war on cops. I hope that the sheriff's department doesn't think that we have a war on cops going on now.
I think the title is probably misleading as far as the contents of the book. I haven't been able to read much of it, to tell you the truth, I haven't had time yet. But I guess I would defer that to my boss to explain, you know, why he.
What was the title of the book again?
War on cops.
War on cops. Sounds interesting. Sad, but it sounds interesting, because.
We can send an email to the sheriff asking for justification.
Sure, absolutely.
So that.
I think you would probably want to.
Just be interested in what the topic is. I mean, we certainly don't have that problem here.
Certainly not.
Any other questions? Thank you. Then that would then bring us to any special reports, or any commissioners or affiliated agencies. If we redo our things, these two things are about the same. So that brings us to public comment. If there's any public comment, please call 231-256-8109, 231-256-8109. While we're waiting for calls, if commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Reddick.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it is my intention to have a senior services committee meeting prior to our December 8th executive committee meeting, and hopefully, at that time, we'll have a recommendation about the car that was requested. So we'll, we'll be, hoping to be on that agenda, requesting to be on that agenda, assuming we can get that meeting in.
Could we, you want to do it on the 3rd after the commission's meeting?
That would work for me.
The 3rd member.
Patricia, she just answered.
Yeah, so, December 3rd after the.
Yes, right. Is that, I'll check with April. Yes, finish your answer.
I just wanted to remind that we had requested financial information associated with the cost of a car, and maintenance, and gas, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yep.
Just.
And past.
Don't want us to wait till.
It'll be mileage used each for the last two years or so, what we used up today, cost.
Just so we know how much it really costs.
So you want that to go to the whole board?
Well, for the discussion.
Afterwards, okay, I was thinking we'd go to the, you know, the.
We were going to.
That's fine.
That's fine, I don't care where it goes first, but.
We're going to go to your committee.
Well, that's a normal procedure, go through the committee.
Right, okay.
And I think one of my questions in that regard is, is it better to allocate the car as a roving vehicle to the county as opposed to one department?
That'll be in our discussion as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea, but I do think we were going to talk about that.
Okay, good. That'll be one of my questions.
Yes, give us your answer.
And really, is this the appropriate vehicle for senior services? You know, it sounds to me like they need a van, not just an Explorer, but, I, you know, committee will address that, I'm sure.
I appreciate that.
They can always tow a wagon behind them.
Here, we have a public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Hi, I'm a public commentator. Which one is the speaker? Chairman Bonnet, we did. Yes, okay, that's who we're in. If you have a TV on, turn it on before we speak. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Patricia.
This is Tricia Denton, I'm a resident of Cleveland Township, and in calling to give public comment in regard to the septic, and I want to get the name of the right here, the potential septic ordinance proposed by Commissioner Ansorby. I did submit an email with some detailed comments. I just wanted to extend my sincere appreciation for the extreme care and thoughtfulness that he put into this proposal that he put forward. Please refer to my public comments that are in the email, and I look forward to further discussions, and thank you again for keeping this topic on the agenda and trying to move forward with a solution that can work for as many people as possible. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I did not get that forward to me.
I didn't either, but it might still be coming.
She might have sent it to your old address, it still should have come.
All right, so then we'll move on to, are there any more commissioner comments? That's good, we'll move on to amendments and transfers.
I would recommend approval of amendment number 20-0011, 20-0012, and 20-13, 013.
Court. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
I would recommend, I move to approve fund transfer 20-007.
Court. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
I would move to approve claims and accounts $302,790.23.
It's, I think it's 320.
I, 320,000, $379.38.
Court. I'm sorry? Yes. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
Move to approve post-odd claims and accounts $12,390,267.34.
Court. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.